My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, I want to wish you an era indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Got number ten, motion to clear open meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five minutes. Opens meetings, act is on the door back there. Roll call, Deb. Myself here, Wyatt.
Yep.
Tim.
Yes.
Chance.
Yes.
And Jim will be here if he's excused for that. Approve the agenda. Jim asked if we could move the school nutrition discussion item back as far as we can so he can be here for it, so if we can move that to number twelve, do we have a problem with that? Anyone make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
First and second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five minutes. Okay, we have student presentation.
I think, yes, I don't think they're all going to be here till six fifteen.
Six fifteen?
Yes, when it's closer for their time for the program. He's just fashionably early.
Mom said five fifteen.
She wanted to make sure you're here on time.
I guess.
Do you want to do it on your own? Okay.
Just sit back and relax, Parker.
We'll just push it back till they get here then. Uh, consent agenda, minutes. Did anybody have any questions on the minutes? Down the bottom, financials. Our E S U was really big, if you remember, I didn't have any last month, so we got to go one more.
That will serve up depends on our other students.
I'm sure to some extent we've got more this year.
There were other things in that too, I tried to list them, like the nurses contract was in that too, and that's over thirty thousand, and some training.
That was all included in that?
That's all included, that hundred twenty seven thousand, yeah, we got there pretty hard. And then two, two months of sped services.
See, I excel for two more years. Oh, you're two of three, not him.
Yes, you're two of three.
And do you renew the contract for that?
It's got that in September, right, so?
Yes.
So it's September third, and it'll be good this year, good next year, and then the following summer, August, and we can discuss it again.
They had a special deal, didn't they, for three years at September three?
Yeah, they cut it by two thousand, is what it was.
Any question on the, on the, here in the claims? I guess we're already looking to talk about that, any more questions on claims? Many miles ago, I'm in the Marano already, that's need new tires.
I think we put about ten thousand a year, this is year four, it's right at forty.
Something major on that plus?
It's all bus language, it's two pages of bus jargon.
A lot of electrical, I think the monitor or the check engine deal probably came on and looks like a lot of electrical wiring type stuff, maybe there was something up in there or something.
A lot of all the parts.
And I'm sure it's stuff that you have to have working to make code with. Okay, there's no more questions, I'll launch a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second that.
It's my first in fact, second, it all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries five minutes. Hey, we have any public comments today? Okay, we'll go to review board policy six oh four oh one and six oh four oh two.
Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Hodson might have some updates for you on this, this is specific to our instructional program and our curriculum.
Nothing to change with the elementary, not all exactly.
I have something that I think I caught. The last line of the second paragraph, it says, "District shall consider elementary grades to be all grades up to sixth." It should be through sixth.
Okay.
Otherwise, they're left out, the sixth graders.
Okay, I see that.
Because the other one that then says eighth, or seventh through twelve, so.
Made a note, thanks.
Just want to let you know I'm, I'm reading it.
Okay.
Doing your homework, Mr. Salzner, very good.
My mom nervous. I'm bad at grammar.
Did you let your pre prep break in here?
What?
Did it get you a pre prep?
No, I didn't type it in and let Grammarly do the word. High school wise and junior high, junior high, we have to add F C S for exploratories that they take, and then we are working on putting industrial tech back into that too. So we have probably had those in, and then the third or fourth paragraph, there is all college or graduation requirements, so we would have to change quite a few of those because they're not even up to date with what the previous ones were, so all of those, what classes and how many units they would be are all going to change. And then on the back page, the first paragraph talks about language arts standards being adopted, that's going to be new again because they were just adopted here in September, so those dates will change.
Was that all on six oh four oh one?
Oh wait, I skipped to six oh four oh two.
That's all on that.
I printed it on two sides, that's why, it's six oh four oh one and six oh four. They're both on the same.
So we'll bring those both back next month with those changes?
I'll be watching.
Hope I spell it right.
I'll forget when I didn't say. Okay, so that's all on that. Okay, and board development. Sixty four, sixty eight. Anybody has any questions or comments on this?
We haven't talked about this in any of our meetings, but state board, this section, that's good. One that stood out, new, micromanaging, trying to avoid that.
Kind of sounded like we didn't want to, we didn't even really have to be a part of the, clean the budget together.
Yeah, almost.
Well, there's a lot here, appreciate you putting it together, Dr. Earl, the time it takes to put it all together and make it work out. Just the time, Jim. We're talking about the board development on school finance right now. Questions or comments you want to make on that?
Board doesn't ever meet with the auditorium, they just get the?
I do. They want one board member to come in.
Okay.
I'll let you do it.
Oh, you're fine.
They usually meet with, Kelly spends a lot of time with them, I think, and then Dr. Earl a little bit, and I spend a little bit of time. Basically, they just want to know if I think anybody's embezzling money. I thought they were embezzling money, if I would have said something like this. It's not too tough. Anybody else want, have any comments they want to make or discussion? That will move on. We'll go back to up to number ten, school nutrition.
Okay, we've, you know, I, just, I guess, it's a good opportunity midway through the year to kind of, you know, update the board on how nutrition program is going, as I was affected, obviously, dramatically by the pandemic, you know, with restrictions and preparation serving and all that business, so we pretty much have dispensed with all of that, we have left up the plexiglass between the serving side and the receiving side, so between the kitchen and, and the cafeteria itself, so that's, that's still there, it's a bit of a nuisance, especially when you have to have communication maybe with cooks, between the students and the cooks, but Linda could probably, you know, address that, whether that's maybe kind of a nice, you know, permanent thing to have or not, but, but we've pretty much gone back to, you know, everything pre-pandemic for the most part, as far as, you know, salad bar is concerned and, and other things, and Linda's and her staff have been shorthanded a couple times severely short handed, fifty percent of them, for a couple of weeks at a time, and she managed that well with subs, and they still continue with our grab and go breakfast, which is, we're in our second year of that through a grant, which we, we love to see our kids grabbing a bag of, of some nutrition, and we, we assume that without that, they, they wouldn't have anything, so Linda could maybe update us too on what those numbers are, but I think they're pretty steady. But other than that, I think Linda can speak to any supply chain issues, did just get a, a message late last week about beware of milk shortage coming up, and that would just be the, I think, the flavored milk, not the white, just the flavored milk, so kids might not get their strawberry or chocolate coming up, but everything else, I think, has been, we've been somewhat fortunate, from what I hear, that might be happening in other larger school districts, but anyway, Lynn is here to, to visit with you about any other questions or comments that you may have about school nutrition.
Yeah, something you want to say first, or you just want to kind of answer questions?
I just answer questions, I, I don't know what, I mean, numbers are, are up, I feed about two sixty-five. We do the lunch, we do the breakfast. I don't know, we've been, we've added some stuff, we've added some subs, if the kids want a sub, they can have a sub, they can order that.
How's that working out, as far as numbers consistent?
Not, not real well. My grandson is probably the biggest one.
You make a good son.
But, we may have one or two, or sometimes they take them, sometimes they don't.
Really?
So it's kind of trying to, you know, keep it on hand, but, and keep it fresh, and trying to keep it ready for them. We've done dinner rolls every day now, sometimes they're the homemade, sometimes pre-baked. Salad bar has always got at least two salads plus your basic vegetables, the lettuce dressing, that kind of thing. And the milk, I just got my shipment on, on yesterday, and it was all white.
Good.
So it won't be long, and they'll be just getting white until they get their line up again. He wasn't very happy because he didn't get loaded the way he wanted to, but maybe he can kind of get us some color or some chocolate in there at least, so. I've been ordering ahead a lot, sometimes I have to order, sometimes I start two to three weeks ahead of time to make sure that I have what I need. I mean, sometimes it's just like, my invoice comes, there's four or five things, just can't get it, so, so I've been storing some stuff ahead so I can kind of keep, keep on my menu stuff, so. Other than that, I don't know what, you guys want changed, or what you've been hearing, or?
Well, my question is simply because I'm ignorant on the subject, so don't take any offense by anything I say, because it's not intended to you, it's because I don't know. I'd like to know what regulates what we do versus like how Wassa does it, at least in appearance, it's like we have two different programs, and I guess, I don't know what's governing us, what isn't governing us, I mean, what do we go by, how's it work, just explain it to me, because I don't know.
Well, we have, we have guidelines, and it comes from the state, and our paperwork has to show that, like, there's calories, there's sodium, there's everything, desserts for one thing, I know I've heard Wassa does desserts all the time, or whatever. We're allowed to do desserts, but it's only a certain amount, and calorie wise, we have to watch calories, so there are things that we cannot do.
Will they have the guidelines they have to follow too, then?
They, they should be following, yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, because it didn't seem like they were.
No, I, and I don't know, now that it's COVID, so we used to have administrative review is like once a year, they would come out, they look at my books, and they'll go through like how many grains I serve a day, and I have to have milk, I have to have fruit, I have to have all these things, calories, sodium, all this stuff has to be, I mean, we have a list of what we're allowed, like the guidelines, so, but, and I don't know, like I said, I don't know what, what, if they've been checked, if they check them, if they don't check them, I don't know.
Just, to me, do we, do we do a lot of, we do a lot of pre-processed stuff, correct?
We do.
Pre-pre-made food?
Yes.
And so those calories have to be accounted for, the same as if they, if they make it, they have to count the same amount of calories your nutrition, right? Okay, that's what I wanted to know, how that worked.
Yes. A lot of the, I don't know, like, I've been putting more like casseroles, okay, so I added a cheeseburger macaroni casserole, which more or less is hamburger helper, and that seems like it goes over well. I don't know, I haven't, well, I heard comments that some people don't like it, but, and you're never going to please everybody.
Right, and my kids are never going to like it.
I mean, there are several things, like on my menu this, this month, like spaghetti, cream chicken on a biscuit, some of that stuff is considered like homemade, we put it together, we don't, we don't send out for lasagna, you know, that comes in a pan, we do all, we make all of that, you know, your hamburgers, the buns and stuff are just, it's just impossible to do that. When Mary and I did it, I mean, we had, we had to have people that were doing their job, and, you know, you had your job to do. But I think our breads are, I hope the kids are pretty happy with them, they're not the dark ones anymore, and they're not dry, they're pretty soft, you know, they're a good bun, a rotella bun is what they are, so I don't know what, like I said, if there's, I've been trying to do a dessert once in a while, it's, it's, stick it in there when I can, you know, cookies or like the apple dessert, I made enough for everybody the other day, and, I mean, a lot of the kids didn't take it, I mean, they have that option not to take it, but it's there if they want it.
How much of the spread is between the minimum nutritional guidelines and versus the maximum, is there quite a bit of room there, or isn't there not?
No.
I mean, for example, you know, you get ten corn dogs versus one.
Right, right. Well, you can serve what you can, I mean, you serve it, and then you can kind of go by calories and kind of how, and I count that as, you know, as it's counted.
Is that calories have a range, or is it?
Yes.
X amount of calories, and that's where you gotta try and?
Yes, no, there's a high and a low, you can go above, you know, there's a range, there's a range on everything, there's a range on, on the sodium, there's a range on the fats, you know, the sugar.
Does that, does that then limit like a second serving, or is there a second serving, if somebody wants to buy like an extra corn dog or something?
Yeah, you can buy, yeah, we have seconds on most of the sandwiches.
So you don't, you, you don't have to say, you know, based on calories or sodium or anything?
Right, right, when they're, when they're bought, like the second, that is not considered part of that original lunch or whatever, the reimbursable lunch. So like most of our sandwiches, I mean, anything, aside from like lasagna or, you know, spaghetti, something like that, that it's just hard to do a second. They can do seconds on any, you know, we usually have a sign up, and they can buy seconds anytime they want to, so. And then they also have the a la carte, which is all the, I call it junk food, but they like it, it's the Rice Krispie bars, chips, we get little, like mini loaves, like, just little things that they can buy in addition to their meal, so that, you know, that's kind of, and that's not counted towards the original calorie or anything on our original meal, like the reimbursable meal, if they pay for it, they can have that.
So it'd be safe for me to say if a kid goes away, it's his own fault?
I, I think so, I mean?
I didn't want you to have to say it, that's why I said it.
I mean, in our salad bar, every day, I don't know, there's, there's always two salads for sure, and I know some of the kids there, you know, we have to pay the salad, we have macaroni salad, some basic salad, but some of the kids, you know, that's really not their thing either, but we do go through a lot of lettuce and, and dressing, apples, oranges, broccoli, cauliflower, you know, all the basic stuff of a salad bar.
And you're offering deli sandwiches now too?
Yes.
An alternative option, which is?
They have to.
One thing that I had brought up to my attention is that they were looking for another option, and I guess that's kind of disappointing to me that I've heard some requests for that, but they aren't taking up on it, are they? You're making one or two sandwiches a day, is that what you said?
I mean, I can show you, I can keep in track, because I kind of want to know, and, and I don't know what, what the difference is, when they, you know, maybe they don't want to be different and order something different, or if they don't get, get it counted, but it's, it should be, I mean, it's ordered in the morning, so we know, you know, if somebody comes through, and, and we've, we've made the number lot sometimes, and then they don't take them anyway, I don't know if they don't, you know, if they maybe like the looks of the spaghetti or whatever, and I don't know, I don't know what.
So that's different than the Subway order, you're making?
Yes.
Sandwiches also?
We're making a sub sandwich that would be, well, I don't know, Dr. Earl, you know some?
Yeah, yeah, and it's an excellent deli sub sandwich, and, and maybe we need to do a better job on our end to make sure our kids understand, I mean, we've, we've reiterated it multiple times, you know, so it was in the, in the announcements in that first week, I think we had four and five and six maybe, and, and then maybe we took it out of the announcements and assumed that a kid knows when the teacher takes that at home, hey, sign me up for a deli sandwich, and, and we don't attach a name to it, so Linda doesn't have to try to watch for that kid, they're just supposed to come through the line and say, aye, I ordered a deli, and so then she'll, she'll get that for them, so maybe it's just the, the procedure of it, because I do find it hard to believe as well that we wouldn't have, you know, a dozen or more, I sure thought that we would, out of, out of a hundred and fifty kids over here that, that go over there and eat, that on any given day, they might, you know, because then they can take that sandwich and go through the salad bar, you can make a pretty good deli sub sandwich out of it, but, so we're not going to give up on that yet, even though it's difficult for Linda to get everything out and make one or two, and then put, you know, and, and keep some frozen, keep some fresh, and the right amounts and so on, but, so we're going to continue with that, and to try to promote that as an alternative entree, you know, for, for our kids, we just maybe need to do a better job on this end of the street to get those numbers up.
So it's only available to the high school students?
Just high school.
Not junior high?
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve, okay.
With the free and reduced stuff, how does that work for those kids that want an extra, are, I mean, are they able to get an extra?
They can get an, an extra entree, but they have to pay for that.
They still have, they would have to pay full price?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. So a la carte and a, and a extra entree, even if you're free or reduced, of course, everybody's free.
Yeah.
But, but, yes.
So for those kids, they can't necessarily, you know, if their parents aren't willing to spend it, they can't necessarily?
That, that's, that's accurate, Tim.
They might be getting.
They might not, if they can't fill up on Linda's regular lunch and salad bar.
All they gotta do is let the person sitting next to them.
So those kids, the sub, the sub sandwich, is that an extra cost?
No.
No, it's instead of the, in lieu of the entree?
In place of.
So they can have the sub, right?
Yes, they can.
Everybody, it's open to everybody?
Yes.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve, yeah, okay.
Dr. Earl, would it be okay with you occasionally want them to stop by for lunch?
Well, absolutely.
I do.
Welcome back.
I eat with my teammates.
Yeah, to me, to me, what I'm hearing tonight, it's a, my lack of education on the, the issue in order to answer some of the questions that the public has, it sounds like it's good, but it's not really good to the public, you know what I mean?
Well, and there's always a stigma with?
Yeah.
School lunch. I mean, it's always been that.
I always like school lunch, I'm going to show up.
But how many, how many kids eat good at home?
Right.
You know, they eat the same way at home, you just make them eat it.
They get what they want at home. Yeah, I mean, they, they go, they raid the fridge, they heat up chicken nuggets, and, you know, my mom and dad are home, they don't eat what we're trying to feed them here at school, right?
Yeah.
They want to have maybe a second entree, but they're refusing to eat their veggies and whatever else we're trying?
Yeah, and, and it's true, on some given day, it, it's not going to be a top ten maybe for a majority of kids, Linda, if she could serve the same five menu items, you know, because it, it's just, it's very, very complicated, I know for her, but, but Dr. Thor, that's really the best way for you to respond, I think, to the public, is to say, I've been, not just once or twice, but a random amount of times, I, I stopped in, and, so I've been there, and you can, you definitely are in a better position to make your own judgment about if there are things that we could do better for kids with regard to nutrition.
And that's one of the reasons we used to always have our February meeting at noon, because we'd all come in and eat dinner, and then?
And we killed fat and calf on that lunch.
Yeah. We haven't done that for a while, I don't know if any of you guys have done that, so.
If you did that, in our first year, I think. I've been back there this year, I did not go at all last year because of COVID and the teammates, but I, I think they got quite a few options, I think there's more there than what there was a couple years ago, isn't there? Definitely last year, last year you really had restricted.
Last year was tough, salad bar was, had to be individual, individually prepared, and so it was very labor intensive to have one portion to prepare for, rather than there's, you know, every kid could use the tongs or the spoon or whatever, so salad bar coming back was, was a big game changer this year compared to last.
I talked to a former principal here that was at a different school, that had, what was the company that does the food?
Lunchtime Solutions.
Lunchtime Solutions at the school he went to, and I asked him if the food was any different, and he said, no, it's not any different than when you have your old cooks, it's the same, same food, they just have a different group on it, so, they go by the same menus.
All the schools are, I mean, they pretty much get this, they can do the same thing, I've been watching like for new stuff, like on the Norfolk stuff, and it just seems like, I mean, we have all that, we don't have it all on one day, but, you know, we have a lot of things they offer, we offer the kids as well, and I think it's probably gotten from, you know, our commodity program, and the commodity food is, they always said it's always not, you know, not real good, but our commodity food is a lot better than what we can order a lot of the times, so. And it's cheaper.
Okay, I appreciate you coming in, Linda, it sounds like you're trying pretty hard.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's been challenging.
Well, I don't know, you're limited in what you can cook with, but it's hard to come up with something new.
I mean, I, and I'm always open to suggestions, people can try stuff if we, you know.
You know, some schools have, like closer to Norfolk where they have Pizza Hut, bring in pizza twice a month or something like that or whatever. But we really don't have a business like that closer, you know, under the subway. Think that would fit the calorie bill?
Or pizza, I was overthinking cases.
Well, I just.
I just always thought that the meat sucked when I was at school. Salad bar, all that kind of crap was all pretty good, but the meat was just.
But I'm also born and raised eating homegrown beef too, so I was born.
Yeah, see, I've been told that some of our surrounding schools, meat is donated by the local cattle feeders out there.
Yeah, well, I feed them out, I don't feed them out. Yeah, that's, that's a program you can do. I know they ran off, they would, they donated the meat and they would take like the steaks and raffle them off at halftime of the ballgame. And they would use that money to pay for the process, because you really can't use the steaks, you know. But it takes a lot of money donating whole beef, you know.
Especially right now.
Five hundred bucks.
Yeah.
Ain't a big deal if you ain't a reader.
Most guys get to pay the process. Well, whoever wants to be in charge of lining up those donors, just raise your hand.
Makes you wonder.
Put some lazy boys in the box seats.
We're gonna sell a lot more ice cream cones. Okay, we aren't ready for guys in ties yet, are we?
Nope, no, it's, when Mr. Peter made it, when Mr. Peter gets in.
Okay.
Eighteen sixty-five.
Closer to, yeah.
Okay, we got the action items then. Number thirteen, discuss and take possible action on approving loan from Midwest Bank to partially fund the HVAC project.
That's all, um, you know, as I, should we discuss last month and, and, uh, uh, talk with, uh, our bank? And, uh, last month we had talked about it, six hundred thousand, we're kind of leaning towards the six hundred thousand. Well, I would be much more comfortable if we went to the eight. And we could, uh, with, with our bank at one point seven five, it's right at two hundred thousand dollars for three years. First payment in June, uh, by June we will have had six pretty good months of revenue. Uh, so that would be a, so payment is a non-issue. We'd have an option to pay off early, uh, if we wanted to, it's just however you want to, we'd want to budget that.
Is there a possibility you'd have your S or money by the first payment for that? I mean, do you apply for that?
We expect our S or money any moment.
For three?
Yes. Um, it's been approved, uh, our payment request for our S or three has been approved. So that will be a, a nice piece of income in, in Kelly's, uh, inbox. I'm just waiting for, waiting to hear, um, for the feds to move on that, so.
You said that's still just like a, our levy number to cover that two hundred thousand.
Levy would be three cents?
Three cents, no, it's seven.
Three years or four years?
Three.
Three years, eight hundred thousand, three years.
Um, it, yeah, that math, that, that math doesn't add up. Um, it's two hundred and, so, and then I didn't bring that sheet ever with me, but, um.
Or closer to two fifty.
Yeah.
Closer to three.
Three hundred now.
I might, I'm, I'm, must be still thinking.
Two times three didn't make sense.
Yeah, I'm still thinking the six, but. I, I think, did I send that email just to the budget committee or to the?
No, I think we got it.
Yeah. At any rate, um. Our bank is ready and that money could be, you know, wired to our account, um, tomorrow.
It's right here on the back. It's already committed anyway to the project as it is.
I think we need to get done as soon as we can.
Pretend it's telling us what we need, so I'll make a motion to approve the borrowing of eight hundred thousand from Midwest Bank at a rate of one seven five. Over three years?
Yeah, yeah, it's over three.
Three, okay, over three years.
First payment is June of twenty twenty-two, Kevin wants that in the minutes.
You can accept?
Who's second? I think, thank you.
Okay, it's been first and seconded, I should repeat what you said, but, uh, three years, eight thousand, three years.
Can we say it again?
First payment in June, okay, Jim.
Say Jim.
Chance.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. And fourteen, discuss and take possible action on resignation of Robin Reed at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Yes, you have, they all have his resignation letter, so there's really no.
I'll make a motion for the resignation of Robin Reed effective at the end of the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second.
Second.
Chance. It's been first and seconded to accept Robin Reed's resignation at the end of this year, Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Fifteen, discuss and take possible action on resignation of Mary Abenhouse at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So who's here? She's got a job in Bloomfield for next year, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Abenhouse effective at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Second?
Second.
First and seconded, myself, yes, Deb.
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Discuss and take possible action on resignation of Terry Hazelhorse at the end of the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the resignation of Terry Hazelhorse effective at the end of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Second?
I'll second it.
First and seconded, myself, yes, Jim?
Yes.
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Okay, number seventeen, discuss and take possible action on approving negotiated agreement with the P P E A for the twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school years. We don't have that.
We talked about last month, are there any changes after that?
No, we haven't had a meeting since, so it's, it's the same. Have you heard anything from them?
You just took, uh, I took Mr. Reed and Mrs. Hazelhorse' name out there, they were listed specifically as those grandfathers in. On our salary matrix, so they don't need to be, they don't need to have their names in this agreement. Right, simply remove those.
You can, you can do that, you can only approve it for our members.
Yeah, because they, they won't, they won't be employees here during this, terms of this agreement.
Anybody have any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the negotiated terms for twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four between the Plenary Public School of Education and the P P A.
Second?
Second.
Seconded. Okay, Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yep.
Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. Number eighteen, discuss and take possible action on twenty twenty-one annual report.
Yeah, it, it looks good, I appreciate you putting it together.
We get a lot of help from, uh, administrative team to provide a lot of that data as well, so it's a, definitely a collaborative effort.
I'm surprised we only have forty-nine percent of our students involved in activities.
In, in three, I mean, if we were to go to two activities, you know, that number would probably go to seventy percent. Yeah, so I mean, these would be kids who, uh, essentially are busy August and May.
I thought it was for any activities.
Yeah.
You see, we gained a few option in, but also had some option out, but just talked about that last year.
Twenty-one of those forty-five are Osmond.
And quite a few home schools. I'll make a motion that we accept the Plenary Public Security Hand Report for twenty twenty-one.
I'll second. First and seconded, myself, yes, Deb. Dr. Thor?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Chance?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero. Number nineteen, discuss and take possible action on purchasing of clown cash for staff. I don't know, to, to what, twenty dollars last year, twenty-four. Was ten before that.
See, you can't give them this regular cash, it has to be clown cash, is that the deal?
It doesn't have to be, they're just doing it to support your town.
Is anybody in town accepted?
Uh, I don't think Family Dollar does, but usually when I was teaching, we'd use it at Mary's or Mitch's.
So Mitch's and Mary's, we'll take it.
That's the only place, I actually only use it at Mary's.
Gotcha.
Because I like the guys. It is nice to support the town. Our town's paid, you know.
You want to leave, otherwise. Dollars here.
Yes.
Exactly, yep. I'll, I'll make a motion for purchase clown cash for the staff, you know, twenty dollars each.
Second. It's been first and seconded, Chance?
Yes.
Tim?
Yep.
Wyatt?
Yes, Dr. Thor.
Yes.
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero. This one's gonna, we gotta go, go just as fast on this one and not slow it down, so another point. Discuss and take possible action on evaluation of superintendent in terms of the contract for twenty-two, twenty-three years. Okay, Dr. Earl asked for, where's that? Four or four and a half?
It's on the back of this, if you have this.
Of course, on the back of the.
Four percent salary.
Four percent.
Do we give the teachers?
Uh, well, it depends.
Yeah.
It, it ranged between four point five and five percent depending where they landed.
We raise their base and then it all depends upon how many years and how much schooling and stuff.
So there's this four point five.
So this array that you gave us, that salary is just salary, that's no extras?
Yeah, yeah, as, as, um, we visited as superintendents, once you get out of, outside of salary, it's pretty difficult to compare. You know, apples to apples, they have a variety of different, uh, packages of benefits, whether it's, uh, you know, annuities or, uh, unused. You know, pay for unused at the end of each year and such, so they all do have a health benefit. So, um, I didn't know of any other ones that had cash and lieu, but they did have a health benefit, which is twenty-five percent more. Uh, of a district expense than cash and lieu. Um, so I, I just decided to just show you, you know, salary benefits are going to be somewhat even, would somewhat balance out across the board.
So when you say cash and lieu, you're talking, you don't want help because you just want a lump payment? Or does it get spread out over the whole year? How's that working?
Yeah, I, I receive it in two payments.
What do the teachers do? They receive cash and lieu?
They get cash and lieu if they don't take insurance. We have about four teachers.
Yeah.
Less than a handful, and it's fifty-five percent of a single is what they ask for.
What's your plans on that early retirement plan?
Ask me in a few.
Because what he gets for a raise, really?
Yeah, um, well, I, I'll reach, I'll be fully vested in N-Pers, which is the Nebraska Public Employees Retirement System. I'll be fully vested, uh, in five years after this year. So that'll be my first opportunity to take full retirement from, uh, the Nebraska Public Employees System.
It's ways out yet.
So right now that's the plan, I have no intention to retire early, uh, from education.
So refresh us on, we do a two-year. But it's not, that's not the salary, that's just.
Yeah.
I mean, we still do the salary every year.
Yeah.
You get a two-year.
Yeah, we, we add one year through twenty-three, twenty-four, the four percent would be for the twenty-two, twenty-three contract.
But you have a contract for the following year, it's not a price set. And if you do nothing, it just automatically carries on.
Right.
Does anybody have a number they want to throw out?
Ask them less than you want to do it.
It's less for a raise than what you had last year. We, we gave four and a half last year.
Yeah.
We learned the history of it anyway.
It's been very up and down, because the one year you waived it, you got zero increase and one year you only got two percent, so.
I guess I, I prefer to keep it anyway, somewhat consistent year to year, not bounce around like that. So I kind of like to stay on track, kind of like we is right now, so you don't have to expect a year.
So you, what are you thinking?
Well, I'm fine with four percent, so I guess I'm fine with what I'm saying. Might use just a half percent less than what I was planning.
Right. Yeah, you gotta kind of keep everybody safe for that particular year. There's no more motion. There's no more conversation on the motion, that's the motion.
I'll make a, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the terms of Dr. Earl's contract for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as read.
Okay, it's my first and second, that we give you the four percent raise. Uh, Deb?
Yes.
Dr. Thor?
Yeah.
Chance? Tim?
Yes.
Wyatt?
Myself, yes, motion carries six zero.
Okay, we're down, uh, are you ready, Mr. Peter?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Can we walk here? I suppose this is the, the yearly report about guys in ties?
We caught that?
Uh, we got Brayden, Bodie and Parker here, well, just about called you somebody else. Uh, this year, we were able to start, because last year we didn't start until about this time, it was November, I think, when we started last year. Um, we got two fourth graders and a fifth grader here, but this year we had.
Two fifth graders and a fourth grader.
My bad. We have five sixth graders, this year we have six fifth graders and we have eight total fourth graders, a total of nineteen boys in guys in ties. Um, so far this year, they've learned to tie a tie, that was their first job. We did okay tonight, working on tucking our shirts in, we're getting there though.
How's Parker's tie, just curious?
What's that?
How's Parker's tie? Do you think he's good?
Yeah. Um, we did the handshakes, that went pretty well. Um, we worked on how to give and receive a compliment. Um, was that, was that the one I gave you as a challenge of compliment somebody during the day? Not another guy in tie?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now I'm all right. Um, and last week, we did introductions, so introducing themselves, kind of goes ties into the handshake thing. Um, but introducing themselves, but introducing someone that they're with, you know, if you're in a group setting type of deal, went okay. Um, last Saturday, uh, was there twelve of you that showed up for the concessions and soup supper?
Oh, yeah.
To help serve for that, you guys did a very, very good job on that. Uh, we're gonna be looking for some more opportunities to do type, that type of stuff, uh, in the future, but, uh, got a good group of kids, having fun, you know? Get pizza and donuts, pizza or donuts.
Or donuts.
Or donuts, yeah, you can have both, but, um, we're doing okay, so, um, I don't know if you guys have any questions or comments. These guys were brave enough to come to the school board meeting tonight, and I appreciate that, so. And did you tie, tie your own ties tonight?
Nope.
I was gonna say, man, yours looks really good.
That's why I missed.
But all right, we're working on it, and I did just see there's three former guys in ties out in the hallway waiting, uh, for the meeting to end, or waiting for FFA to end. Uh, all three have put their heads together, got a tie tied, and FFA tied tied, so I was walking by like, hey, I'm just gonna go talk about that, so. Pretty happy to see that, but, um, that's what we got going on this year, got a good group of kids and, and keep it going.
You know what not, what not you use on your tie?
It's called like a four-hand, it's like the easiest way to tie a tie, that's how I work, tie a tie.
I don't know one from the other, I just know there's a Windsor.
Yeah.
Double Windsor? I can't tell you how to do it.
Double Windsor's where it gets complicated, we don't want complicated.
Mr. Peter, could you guys in ties, uh, model for us introducing themselves to each board member?
Ooh, yeah, you guys wanna show the handshake?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Parker.
Jim Thorpe.
There we go. Woody.
You guys, any trigger tree?
You have to introduce yourself to me.
Parker's phone. Nice to meet you, I'm Deb Jensen.
Hey, Mr. Bo. Nice to meet you, Jim.
She long, she looking in the eyes. The firm handshake.
What's your name?
Hi, I'm Mrs. Jensen.
Nice to meet you, Bodie, good to see you again. Wyatt.
Hi.
Hi.
Good practice.
We talked about the handshake stuff because you want your handshake to be, can't crush their hand, don't linger, don't do the two-hand, don't get weird about it, you know, just. Yeah, no, no, no dead fish, can't do that.
Yeah, that's a weird.
Yeah.
Maybe you guys could get on Coach Fromm at football season to wear a tie in practice. That's probably easier than wearing a tie.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sing pretty tonight.
Yeah, concert.
Okay, bye.
Belt it out, buddy.
Okay, we're on the. Activity director's report.
Uh, the only thing that's changed, one act finished their season, uh, they want the districts at Creighton finish fifth, or fifth. They had a really good play, if you saw it, so, uh, they did a nice job in Miss Mussel's first year, so congrats to them. Uh, winter seasons are all underway, I'm pretty sure everybody's, everybody has competed at least once. Junior high's finishing up this week, uh, for girls, and wrestling is finishing tomorrow, um, for junior high, so wrapping up a few of those and then starting a couple more here after the first of the year. Scoreboard update, the piece that they were looking for actually did come in, so, uh, they're gonna install those December twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth is when they're gonna be here and install them. So those will be up and running here after the first of the year, and then I put moratorium on there, December twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, there'll be no activities and no activities in the, in the building, so. Pretty much it.
So what date is, uh, how do the tournaments start, they get a practice in before it starts?
Twenty, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, so the first day back, they're playing again.
Uh, principal's report.
Testing, that's pretty much all Jen's been doing, Tom, for the last two weeks. Uh, map testing, we're supposed to finish seven, twelve, we'll finish tomorrow, and then makeup testing Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, elementary.
Pretty much same story, except I might have to use Monday and Tuesday of next week.
Uh, we did do the NSGAS pilot, so we were just doing ELA with that, um, I know I did both seventh and eighth grade over here, there's a couple of makeup that I have to do yet, and we hit a few snags with a few of the tickets on my end. Um, just because I didn't check them ahead of time, and we had a couple of tests that came in Spanish, and they shouldn't have been in Spanish, so. Uh, we're getting those things ironed out, but, uh, Jen's got, her, you did NSGAS today, right?
Yep, we, we did fifth grade today, and, um, with NSGAS, this is not only our state test, but it will also be the same platform that we use for, for our map testing come spring, so you'll see this word, that acronym a lot more, just because it'll be our universal testing platform.
As we've done map testing three times the last two years, it'll just now be NSGAS growth that we do third through eighth grade. Still, uh, the plan is still to map the high school, so we have data, so we can show growth through those grades, but, um, NSGAS is going to replace MAP at those grade levels.
Will you map Kinder through second grade three times with maps in? Three times a year? Um. Because you said NSGAS, just third through. It is, third through eight, yes. It's something that we can consider, yeah.
Um, looking at that, we've been tracking all of our scores and stuff, uh, we came up with, talking with the teachers, an incentive for our kids, and so anybody that shows growth in one of the four areas on MAP, uh, we're actually gonna have a movie day with them, uh, in the gym, so we'll play a movie on the scoreboard, since we can use it as a TV. And with that, if they were showing growth, one to three points in an area, they would get a piece of candy from the concession stand, four to six points will get you popcorn. Uh, if they show seven points of growth or more, they would get a pop then, and then growth in two areas of one to three points will get you ice cream, and then growth in two areas of four points or more will get you everything that was listed above. So that way, they get a, a treat, I guess, I mean, they get to watch a movie for showing improvement on their testing, but then they also have a little bit more incentive to do the best that they can with some treats from the concession stand.
Stay within the calorie limit from the.
No calories in the.
We don't want you to solve a government toll.
Uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirtieth, it was gonna be the twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-ninth, but holiday weekend, they wanted to push it back to start Tuesday, so he just sent that email five minutes ago, letting you know.
And actually, almost all of the kids will be part of the incentive, because if they showed growth by one point, they were automatically invited to it, so we're excited about that.
So these numbers, are those students, like, the first numbers, eleven equals forty-four percent, is that eleven students? So why doesn't it always add up to the kids in that grade?
That's the previous year's.
Oh, that's the previous.
Yep.
Um, music trip, they went to Branson, or Omaha, then Branson, that would've been in November, that was a little bit a while back. Um, but had a great time, everything I heard from that was a success, and they enjoyed going, so I know that was fun for the music department to get a trip for the first time since I've been here, so, uh, kids really enjoyed it. Thursday night, National Honor Society's having their induction ceremony, so we'll be adding five kids, uh, into the National Honor Society, that's again Thursday at seven o'clock. Leadership team, um, all of the ladies who are on the leadership team are going to be, um, participating in a virtual Empowering Women Athletes Summit tomorrow, and so, uh, there's pretty much, I think there's about twenty or twenty-five women um, of the most powerful influential women in sports and activities, and I think there's politicians, um, pretty much everything, the business world, that are going to speak. Jen's gonna be leading that with that group, um, so they all have different breakout sessions, they'll take notes, they'll report back to the leadership group what they learned from it, um, so that should be a pretty fun event for them. And then social media responsibilities, we purchased, uh, it's called Class Intercom, so it takes our Twitter and our Facebook and combines it in one platform, and I just gave kids access to it today, so if you've been on social media, all the graphics and everything that's been pushed out today was all done by our leadership group. They created it over the weekend and, uh, throughout today, and what they do is they create it, post it, and then as an administrator, we go in and approve it, um, so if there's a spelling error, or if something needed to be added, or if something was wrong, we can go in and edit, and then when we post it, it sends it straight to Twitter and Facebook. So our kids have been taking a little bit more ownership of promoting the school and our activities and everything going on, so there's gonna be quite a bit more stuff going out on social media here coming up, because the kids are gonna be having that responsibility, so.
So they add pictures with their phones and stuff too, to.
Yep, pictures with their phones, they use Canva to create graphics, like the game announcements and stuff, they all came up with, so. Do you want some more?
Nope.
Take some of them?
Um, student enrollment is the next thing on our list, in the last two weeks, we have gained three different families of three or more per family students. Um, and we just got a phone call today that we're getting two more, but we had known about that, we just didn't know when they were coming, so, uh, the elementary specifically has had almost ten kids in the last three weeks added to our enrollment. Um, of those numbers, some of them are ELL students, uh, we had a fourth grader today come for the first time, and, uh, his pri, his primary language is Spanish, so that is something that we are kind of seeking out through the ESU to help kind of navigate the waters with, because Kyle's already had a couple of high school students with, um, ELL students where, and we use Nicole to help with those students, but in our building, we don't have the availability of Nicole, so. We, um, this particular student's sister is helping kind of navigate these first few days as he's kind of test, or kind of watching how things are happening, and so that is something that you may hear us talk a little bit more about, is the increase in ELL population that we have had. Um, on Saturday, so Saturday was our soup supper, and that went really well, um, this JPP organization is, um, determined to help generate funds for our playground project, that's kind of their main goal throughout the year, and we've talked about trying to pick a project each quarter and fundraise in one way or another, so that went really well, and we raised over two thousand dollars just in that event on Saturday, so excited about that, and so thankful for all the people that helped make that possible. Um, the last thing that we have on here are our NSGAS results from last spring, so these numbers reflect the previous grade's students, and when you look at these numbers, one of the things that the state was very concerned with that caused the pushback of this information to be pushed back so much is the fact that COVID was such a primary factor in the scores, and why they may not be as high as what we wanted. So as you look at these numbers, um, don't let the lowness of the number discourage you, because it's not just Plainfield Public Schools, it's all of the schools across the country, and the department just wanted to reiterate to educators, to the stakeholders, that everybody is in the same boat, and now we have these numbers as a baseline for growth that can happen in the future, and so one of the things that I did was just kind of typed a letter to parents, so when they see their individual, their students, or their child's individual scores, they understand that, yes, it may not be as high as you expected or you wanted, but understand that with COVID, it really affected the learning that happened in our state, and it really also affected the assessment results within our district.
You have any ideas what those numbers typically are?
Um.
A couple of years ago?
From when?
Like maybe a couple of years ago before all the pandemic or.
Yeah, they're, they are higher. Yeah, they are predominantly higher, um, I wouldn't say drastically higher, because it all kind of depends on the grades and the students that you have within that grade, but there were, I mean, when you look at the number of non-proficiences versus proficiences, there are several grades where we are not proficient versus proficient. And, um, it's just kind of a universal feeling across the state that COVID had such a big factor in the learning that there did not happen, and therefore, testing scores are not as high as we would like to see them.
Yeah, okay.
If I can contribute a little bit to that conversation, and if you follow statewide news at all, you've seen lots of information in Norfolk or Omaha in particular about the effects of COVID on state assessment. Um, now, COVID disruption didn't affect us as much as quite a few other school districts, however, uh, what, what some folks, they think, okay, uh, uh, spring of twenty-twenty, kids were, went to, so that would've been, and that's, that would've been massive COVID disruption throughout all of last school year, due to quarantines and isolations and teachers, you know, a lot of substitute teachers and so, that affects the learning process, but a big part that, that they don't talk about a whole lot is the effect on students when they're home, and the effect that the, the pandemic has had on their individual families. We have about fifty percent of our kids that are a low socioeconomic status. Folks that are low socioeconomic status are, are, are more adversely affected by the pandemic, and so when those kids aren't in school, they still have mental health trauma outside of school that is gonna affect everything that, that's gonna affect how they come to school prepared, and how able they are to, uh, to, to be able to, you know, embrace and, and, and take advantage of the opportunities of school. So it's not just, um, uh, spring of twenty-twenty that would've affected, uh, achievement scores, or the disruptions that kind of popped corn throughout the year last year that would've affected achievement scores, a lot of it has to do with the trauma that they have outside of school, due to how the pandemic affects their, their own family dynamic. Uh, and that's a massive factor, you know, as well, particularly in, uh, higher poverty areas, uh, of which, according to some statistics, we would be considered one. Um, so that's a, uh, that, that plays into, you know, Jen's, you know, explanation there, that you know as well, that would adversely affect our student achievement scores.
And last year too, wasn't it, I mean, it's much better this year, if, if one person in the family got COVID, that added, you started two weeks after that one, and if they got it, then some kids were gone, what I was assuming, they were still gone, like, two, three weeks later. So that's better this year though, isn't it?
Yes.
It's not as quite as extensive.
Yeah, I, I guess I would consider minimal disruption.
Yeah.
Due to, uh, positive tests or, or quarantines are, are quite, quite rare.
I noticed that last year.
But, you know, we still obviously would have many, many families that aren't, would anybody would consider recovered from the pandemic, you know, economically.
Right.
Uh, or then psychologically, emotionally, those effects on, uh, kids' preparedness for school.
A lot of baggage.
So back up to the new kids at school, are we sitting all right with class size and teachers in all those grades?
Any in second grade?
In second, no, third grade got three in one day. But, yeah.
Second, third, or.
Pretty big, they're, they're two biggest.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Principal's report is done, so the president's report, I was just gonna say a little bit about the state convention, I see Dr. Earl's got that, it is, so I'll just save my comments to the, so, the superintendent report.
Okay, um, yeah, uh, state convention is, you know, awesome as, as usual, I mean, I just listed the, the different breakout sessions that I attended, um, you know, everything's good, the networking is, is very, very good, uh, all the vendors, that is good, it can be a bit of a, you know, you kind of, they, they, they're there because they want school business, but it's still good to wander through and, and meet people and visit with people and make connections, um, and because there are obviously a great, great variety of, um, services and resources that schools need, so. Uh, all those things are just very good, so that state convention, again, always the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday prior to the Thanksgiving week. All right, Esther, two and three reimbursement, since you got your packet last Thursday, those amounts had been requested, those amounts have been approved, and should hit our bank account anytime, uh, so that will be awesome. Uh, the three eighty, zero eight one is the exact amount, two invoices, and. Uh, the three eighty zero eight one is the exact amount, two invoices and checks that, that will go out to facility advocates for the date, so they can purchase materials for the HVAC, uh, project. Uh, Jen had mentioned, uh, ELL students, I think probably two months ago, maybe three, about, at the start of the school year, I think we, we essentially had zero, we're now in double digits. ELL stands for English Language Learner, so essentially we're talking about, for the most part, students who have Spanish as the primary language in the home. Doesn't mean that they don't speak English, because oftentimes you have students who speak English outside of the home, but Spanish is the primary language in the home. Uh, if it is, they're considered ELL students, used to be called ESL, English as a second language, but now ELL, so, uh, we have to serve these kids, and we're, we are fortunate to have an ELL certified staff member, that is Nicole Darnell, uh, excuse me, Nicole Clemens. So she, she's been helping with some of those things, but we have not had a dedicated ELL teacher or program, uh, how, uh, which essentially would be, how are we providing those services to those kids, uh, that are in our school district? And so, uh, your administrative team is working with, uh, resources at ESU seven in Columbus, as well as other school districts that, that, uh, have, uh, a population of ELL students that can, you know, give us some guidance, but we will be putting, uh, some specific procedures in place to make sure we're serving these kids, if it means that Mrs. Clemens' schedule is going to be a little different. Uh, or if, if we continue to have, you know, students, ELL, uh, students show up, uh, we'd be looking at, at, at staffing issues, needing to, you know, hire somebody to serve those kids. As, uh, Mrs. Hodson mentioned, the sister of a student that started today is here, and she's an adult, the adult sister of a student is here to, because he speaks little to no English. The other students that have come can navigate well enough, uh, but you'll hear them speak Spanish in the, in the hallway when they're with a, a, you know, another student, an ELL student. And that's great for our culture, it, it, it really is, uh, um, but, but certainly you can imagine how difficult and challenging it would be for those students. And so we need to make sure we have the resources, uh, to support them.
That'd be something we could share with another school?
Potentially, absolutely. Um, it, so, I, I, I don't know how many schools that, that, you know, just a, a teacher has that certification on the side, we're very fortunate, uh, that we do. Uh, so, you know, Mr. Schmidt, uh, and, and Mrs. Hodson, you know, will be figuring out how schedules maybe need to be adjusted, particularly next school year, uh, to make sure that we're in a position to serve, uh, this new growing population, um, of students. So, uh, and then just head enrollment summary and vacation and sick balance listed for you.
So you didn't let me in on the, the school board?
Yeah, go ahead, I got on the roll, I just kept going, I had a music concert.
I just wanted to bring up that I went to a title line meeting, and they talked about in there with, uh, where you have, you know, such, like, the groups that fundraisers, uh, like that's doing the school, or the scoreboards, yeah.
Sports boosters.
Sports boosters. But you really have to be careful as a school that, when they bring in money, that that money gets spent equally between girls' boards and boys' boards. It would have to be equally to a sport, but it has to be split pretty much equally between girls and boys. So, you know, with our scoreboards, we're all right, because we have volleyball and girls' basketball and boys' basketball, a little bit of wrestling, so it's, it equals out, we get this. At some schools, they'll have a, a sports group just for the football team, and they'll raise money just for football. Uh, you can get in trouble, you know, another group, girls' sports says, well, nobody's doing anything for the girls, you put all that money, so, you just have to kind of be aware of that and try and keep it equal as much as it feels, so. Deb, if you want to.
My favorite was the student, student advocates that I went to, it was a young man from Laurel, Nebraska, um, so, in our, but, the things that they, they were concerned, that they thought that we as educators, board members could do better, they more mentoring for kids. And these are kids that are very active, but they just see fellow students struggling with that, and, uh, that was their, their thing that they thought that we could do better, I mean, as, as a whole of the schools. But I thought that was interesting, because, you know, it makes them aware, I thought, so, that was my favorite. A lot of good things, interest, the lawyers were interesting, it's kind of scary what's going on out there. We live in a very great school system, lucky to.
Uh, just, I, I wrote a note for, on, um, two other quick things, and so, yes, I did misspeak when I was talking about that load, they had six hundred thousand, it had my fault. I did send you that email,
Yes.
but just so, you know, for the record, that, it'd be about two hundred and seventy thousand here starting next June, and that's at about three and a half cents on the levy. Okay, so three and a half cents on the levy, about two seventy, so that's better math, yeah. So, so I apologize for misspeaking earlier, and also that class intercom that Mr. Schmidt talked about, I brought, we had brought the idea of, of Aptige to you a month ago or two months ago. Uh, so Mr. Schmidt and Mrs. Hodson said, well, okay, we still need to solve, uh, you know, our social media issue, Aptige would allow us to do that. They found this, uh, for less than a thousand dollars, that does a big portion really of what Aptige would have done. Uh, and, and they're, they're, they're making it work as well as what we would have used a big part of Aptige to do at a fraction of the price, and so, uh, so that was a, the, the right decision on your part, and your administrative team went out and still found a way to do, to accomplish basically the same goal that we brought to you at greater expense last month, and so, um, that's your administrative team that probably solved that.
So is it a, you did it then, or you won't be coming to the board?
Yeah.
Great, good job. We have anything else adjourned, if you want some of the kids?